Nice to share.
Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the July 1st, 2025 meeting of the Parnell Planning Commission. I'm going to start with a board member roll call.
Jim Winchester.
David Powell.
John Massey.
Brett Miller. And nobody on Zoom. So we'll actually, we'll go to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have an agenda item for approval administered in seventeen. You don't believe we have a forum of members who are here?
Okay.
So I believe we'll be tabling that until next time.
Yep.
So our next agenda item is to continue our discussion of the town plan and document all bullet points from team members. This is in regard to our looking at the vision statement and throwing our ideas into arrive that clarity on what our revision revision statement is. David suggested we do it on the board and he offered to man the board.
Oh, did I? Okay. Okay, I'll man the board.
David, if you've got any bullet points, if you want to lead, you want to lead this discussion.
Yeah, I sort of gathered together what we talked about three or four meetings ago, at least my interpretation of them. And so as a starting point, I'll throw them up, glad to adjust or do or whatever. I don't know if end that star. So I had, so we'll have to have some sort of an introduction, which I played with, but I, we have, we find. But the, the idea is what are the main things that we want to prioritize in this plan? Looking forward five to 10 years. So the one that was in the old plan, I think everybody seems to like was preserve, right? Well, preserve the town's natural beauty and rural character. Can you see that?
No, we can't.
So we'll just do it verbally. So preserving the town's natural beauty and rural character. Do you want to talk about that at first, see if that like works, if people want to adjust it, what, you know?
I can't say we adjusted or do anything with it, you know, it is what it is.
It is what it is. Well, that certainly appeared all throughout the old plan, you know, natural beauty being one of our best assets.
Yeah.
I think that was in paragraph two point one five. Natural resources and protect. But yeah, preserve the natural beauty, was that?
The town's natural beauty and rural character. Now, I know we've had talk about, you know, trying to increase commercial stuff and, and there's a little bit of a trade off there. It was stated, I know at a meeting when I asked the question, you know, we can do both. I think there's a little challenge in that, but I think if we're thoughtful about it, we can. Okay, should I just go on to the next one?
Yep.
Uh, encourage responsible development and infrastructure renewal. Meaning.
Say it again.
Encourage responsible development and infrastructure renewal. Not letting things just deteriorate and fall apart, maybe even expand a little bit in order to encourage responsible development, which goes to the commercial thing that I think Brian was talking about. You know, we haven't talked about where, how, or anything, but some interest in that.
Expand, expand infrastructure resources.
Well, I we could say that. I don't know if we need to now. I mean, I think we sort of have to, there's a chicken and egg thing that always goes along with that. I'm certainly not saying don't expand it, but.
I think mentioning it to where we can have the door open for that in the future anyway. Because, you know, if you're going to do any, any kind of development, you're going to have to expand. The sewer line. I don't see how.
Well, you have to have, you have to have expansion, you have to be willing to expand.
Yeah.
True, you have to have willingness in, in a lot of this stuff that we're, we're looking at. Is there a willingness to, to expand? Is there willingness to let businesses come in? Is there a willingness to, you know, promote this stuff to happen in the town? Or does it sit idle and that's, that's the way it's had for so long.
I think, yeah.
It just kind of sits idle, nobody's really, kind of willingness to try it.
So how about encourage responsible development and infrastructure renewal and thoughtful expansion? Something like that. I don't think we want to necessarily throw a lot of money at expansion, expanding the sewer.
No.
If there's nobody there to use.
Right.
Um, so it's, it's, that's where the chicken and egg comes in, but you know, to do it in a thoughtful manner.
Yep. From our, from our expansions.
How about renewal and development? It's like you just say renewal and development, infrastructure renewal and development or further development. Responsible development and infrastructure renewal and development. Maybe it's just responsible infrastructure. Responsible development sounds like businesses and commercial and whatever. I hate using the same word twice in the same sentence.
I think we wordsmith it later. Get the ideas, get the main ideas and, uh, you know, if we can have, if there is a a word document that we can bust into.
Oh, yeah.
Then they'll really come together and you'll read it over.
I think he's keeping it on that base of what you're saying, it's not bad to get started with. That's, that sounds pretty, pretty reasonable.
My third bullet is going a little farther than what we talked about. This is my opinion and I don't know if it's a shared opinion. But what I, what I was going to propose was view town services and I put as examples, fire, roads, policing, transfer station, schools, library as a common asset to be supported wherever possible by town taxes, which are progressive rather than fees, which are regressive. So this is, and, and that's too wordy and whatever, but my point is that we've, we, I think this came up when we were talking about the garbage dump on Route seven and the fact that people with limited means don't access the landfill because it costs them money that they don't have. And so what can we do about that? We have to figure out ways to be taking more money from people who have it and providing services to people who don't.
So you were saying by taxes rather than fees?
Well, I said where possible by taxes rather than fees. Fees are the same dollar amount to every person who walks in there. Taxes, you're taxing the people who have fancy properties more than.
Ideally, the fees are for people that actually utilize the sewer.
Yeah, I mean, you know, one of my internal debates is the fact that you have to pay a fee for garbage, but recycling is free. That's a good thing. That encourages recycling. So it's, I don't think we get rid of fees.
And I know during that discussion, we talked about the, the membership for the transfer station.
The annual fee.
Even annual item on the tax bill, like just like the sewer system. For homeowners, all homeowners, yeah, all owners that would include landlords who could, they can reclaim their fee rental. And, you know, and as, you know, the current, I think this year the cost of a fee, a dump fee is going to be like sixty, sixty or sixty five dollars. You know, range. On our property taxes, we're paying it one way or the other. More people are paying it for some of the taxes. And, but what it does, it provides us access to that dump for, for all of those people. Whereas they might choose to pay the caselen or somebody to come get their, get their trash, but it doesn't help the town.
That's true.
Much, no.
Well, you're right. It's, if you're taxing everybody, then the people who choose to use Casella are getting charged twice.
Yeah, just like I am, I use my own septic system and I'm paying for, you know, for that. So.
I know a lot of people like to prefer Casella or somebody else. You know, I've been dead a long time with it and I didn't go to the dump and, you know, I just bite the bullet.
Yeah.
And that's, of course, is a deduction as a business.
Right.
Yeah, you know.
Well, you're paying the fee because Casella pays the fee, right? So when you pay Casella monthly, it costs a lot more than that.
Oh, yeah.
That's where, that's where I think part of that discussion about the through taxes getting homes that that suggestion that maybe it go is tacked on to the tax bill.
Right. And.
I don't know if we want to do a lot of those types of things. Yes, I guess that's, that's a big question.
Well, and as I was reminded a week ago or two weeks ago, when I watched those videos, we don't make any decisions here.
Right.
And we're throwing out sort of a conceptual thing to think about more taxes, less fees. And then the select board does the action. So if we think that's the right general direction.
When you throw that in there and they can pull it out.
Oh, yeah.
They can go along with it.
Or they leave it there and ignore it, which often happens.
Make it a valid article, who knows?
I mean, I, I don't know. I tossed up on both sides of that. It's going to be, I think that'll be a hard push to get through taxpayers. It's a hard push when it comes down to the meeting.
If that's in the town plan, which is presented to the public for, for vote, then we would find out. Yeah. And it might have to come out.
Right.
But I don't think that's the reason not to include it.
I think it's interesting that, I think you're right, everybody, oh, you're going to raise my taxes. Well, if you're a low income person, your taxes might go up 20 bucks instead of the fee that was sixty five. You know, you're ahead.
True.
Yeah.
But it's hard to get them to understand.
Get this guy up here, be any sympathy.
Yeah, I mean, I, I understand it. I understand what you're trying to do. It's just gonna, we have to expand somehow. It's a part of like expansion for the town. It's a part of cleanup. It's part of.
Well, that's it. If we want to have this be a town with filled with natural beauty, we got to have less garbage on the street. Why is there garbage on the street? Because people are dumping it there because it's cheaper than bringing it to the landfill. Well, what are we going to do about that? You know, I mean, it's all.
Well, you know, I, I, I see a lot of people coming from Williamstown.
Yeah.
The rubbish. I know, I know, I know. But I know more about Williamstown than, than most people. Forty five years that, that with them and they're good people, you know, but there's people, you know.
I don't know what their fee is for their landfill. It's probably higher than ours.
Oh, yeah, it is. Yeah. But they take a little bag and dump it, you know, I used to have a container out front and I just filled it up. So I love that. That's things to learn.
Yeah.
Wow. So other, other services.
Well, we already fire, well, fire is fuzzy. You know, I mean, we, we certainly allot some money from taxes already and that seems right. I don't know what the balance should be. There are no fees for fire, but there are fees if you use the ambulance service, right?
Yeah, they bill.
Yeah, so, you know, and I don't know what the right thing is. Happily, I don't have to know that. But just generally speaking, we want to make sure.
Entity from the town.
Yeah.
They have their own thing.
Yeah.
Or charge them for that.
Yeah, I didn't even list them actually.
No, you listed fires, same thing.
But policing, you know, we want some. We don't want to have fees for that, I don't think.
How, how to calculate how much we actually need?
Yeah, I don't know.
The more people you add, probably the more law enforcement support you're going to need. But I don't know what the ratio, how to, how to even benefit that.
Well, again, that's not our job.
Your job is put something on paper.
Yeah, and, and what's the direction?
Yeah.
What's the direction we want to go? And I think, you know, town services ideally would be covered by town taxes.
Yeah.
And that's a more progressive way to cover them.
Yep.
That's all I'm saying. So maybe we can wordsmith it into a better format, but.
I think this gentleman would take that as something.
Yeah. That's so. Let me get something written down here. What do you have, Dave?
Well, I think maybe I could simplify it to town services would benefit all the citizens. Should be paid for as much as practical out of taxes rather than fees. Leave the as much as practical because there are reasons not to sometimes, but maybe we, I don't know if we want to say, because that's a more progressive way to pay for them, you know, let the people with less means, let's not sock it to them. Some of those lines.
I think we should.
Noble thought. I don't know if it works, you know, I, you know, I just, I know a lot of people in town just don't like certain people.
Just don't like.
Don't like certain people.
Certain people don't like certain people. Okay, what's that? How's that?
Well, it's just people that, you know, hey, some people in the parks. This park here is a good one, one down below, another one, and the other one's kind of tough.
So you think that relates to how people would relate to being progressively taxed rather than doing fees?
Yeah, I do.
Sock it to them?
Well, I hear people talk all the time and I, you know, they don't like any new taxes naturally.
Of course.
And they bitch about the paying for the sewer and, you know, this and that. And they're just afraid of any new tax. We're going to get like Williamstown. I hear that all the time, you know, like, we're not like Williamstown. We can't be like Williamstown. Williamstown's got the college. They got a $25 million buyout station going over there. They got the clock. They got more money than God. You know, but that's what I hear all the time. We're going to get like Williamstown. And that's the argument.
That wouldn't be the worst thing in the world.
Well, no, it wouldn't be. We just can't be though. We don't have a college. We don't have anything.
Yeah.
So, so David, you were saying the taxes is progressive?
Yeah, taxes, uh, town taxes are, are on land, on property. So if you own a million dollar estate, you're paying a lot more taxes than if you own a mobile home in the mobile park.
Yeah.
You know, so if we charge people based on property value, which is what taxes are versus everybody pays 50 bucks for the fee or whatever like that, that's more progressive.
Fees, when, when you say regressive?
Well, I guess, I'm not sure if that's the right term because it's, it's the same for everybody. So it's not progressive. I don't know if regressive is actually the right word. But it's, it's the same for every person, no matter what their needs are.
Right. Based on their use?
Well, I think it's different with different things, like the library, you might never walk in there.
Right.
It's a town asset, whether you use it or not. Personally, I feel like that's an important thing to have if we want to have a town that's going to grow and, you know, educate itself and et cetera. Whether or not you choose to, so it's different with different things. But sure, the transfer station, I mean, if you're hauling truckloads of stuff, it should be costing you more than if you're just bringing a bag now and again. So happily, we don't have to.
Some of those services like the library is a line on, on the tax bill every year.
Yeah.
No, it's, it's on the town when we vote for the, the taxes, it's there. It's my tax, my property tax bill. That's just school around.
Right. But it's the line item that's added to the municipal portion of the taxes.
Yeah.
If for some reason the voters in town said no on the library, it wouldn't be on your tax bill.
Same with the fire departments.
Exactly. So that's, you know, that's basically how, how services are basically covered already.
Yeah.
So.
So I think it came up because of the transfer station conversation. That's the only thing that kind of got added to it.
Yeah. Okay. Just wanted to get clear on that.
Yeah. Um, the only other one I had was encourage active involvement of community members in supporting the town and a general spirit of volunteerism. I don't remember where I got that, but I thought.
I don't know where you got it either. I don't, I don't particularly see it.
I think that does happen. I, I know it's always been, it always has been set in the past.
Actually, it's on our town website.
Yeah, it's, it's always saying, try to get people to come out and do it, but it's, it's a very hard thing to do involved. It just, it just seems to be there. That's why you got people under here, year after year, because those are people of willingness work for the town.
Yeah, I don't know about putting, including that in the town plan. It's a nice thought that people will.
It's nice to put it in there.
Again, you know, the town plan is aspirational. It's not like it's all going to get done, but to my feel, I mean, it goes along with, everybody was yelling about lack of transparency. Well, that's a piece of getting people involved is let them be knowledgeable. You know, why are the taxes going up? Let's not just have somebody say, let's pay $986,000. It's like, what's going on? And so, you know, getting community members involved means first giving them more information, communicating, letting them have access. You know, we've increased the, the ability of people to, you know, go on their computer and watch these meetings or even watch them later. I think that's all good. You know, this community garden thing is sweet, you know, and people feel good about it. Things like that are just good to help develop a sense of a positive community. That's, that's all I'm going for.
Yeah. It's a nice thought. Let's do it.
That's all I have. There may be other things.
Encourage community involvement?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's enough.
Yeah, improve communications.
I, one thing I was thinking of is some places in here, it's almost a lamentation that our population is aging. And that's, and that's a problem. That we have to find ways to join younger people with families and but, you know, what I, what I'm getting at is like, maybe adjust our focus a little bit to embracing the aging population and, and encouraging development that kind of encourages senior housing, senior development. Not say we have services that shy of.
Do that. I mean, I don't know what that looks like.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't see it. I don't see it.
I don't know, when it's in here to encourage our younger, how do you do that? I mean, this is like 2019, you know, what's changed, you know?
Nothing. Well, it is an interesting thought. I mean, kids need to go to school. That means the taxes related to that. Now, I'm not against that at all. And.
A baby boom would really be nice, but you know. We don't have a school, we don't own a school anymore.
And it's under capacity. So, you know, there's room. That's not a problem.
You may lose it too. Under the new laws.
Yeah, who knows?
Yeah, I think, I think it might be going to.
Might have to be. We could do on that subject, we could do what North Bend has done.
Yeah.
Yeah. So charter school, is that what it is? Charter school?
Yeah, charter school, yeah.
Is that their elementary school, this charter?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't know that. Except it's not ours to turn into a charter school.
It's not.
I know, it used to be, but it's, isn't it too late now?
I don't think it's too late. You need to take a lot of fighting, but you know, it's there.
I, I don't even know how it got that way.
I don't know how it got that way.
Without anybody else knowing about the vote.
Yeah, all of a sudden you just whisked away. Like that.
It was, it was a vote.
It involved two votes.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it was, yeah. I don't want to get name calling.
But it was done and no one knew what was going on. No one ever even heard about it.
So that goes to my previous point. You know, I mean, something as monumental as handing the school to the Southern Vermont Supervisor Union, people should have known about that. Whatever their opinions are, let's have a good conversation about what are the pros and cons. But we didn't have the information. That's, that's the first thing.
Wouldn't have mattered.
No, it wouldn't have mattered. No, they were going to take it.
I voted twice not to merge, not to give that school away.
Yeah, they did.
Well, you had your, you had your board that's nice, but now we're going to do it.
So. That's, I, we got into a topic I don't know anything about, but yeah.
But, but still it's up there and it could be something wrong with it, you know, I mean, I'm not sure that it's the end and we may lose it to anything.
Well, if we lost it to Bennington, that's an interesting thing because we got a big facility there that.
Oh, yeah. No, no, you're right.
How do we develop it, you know, maybe that's senior housing. I mean, I don't know.
No, it's a possibility. Yeah.
Have it, have it be a school, be a charter school or do something.
Well, it's a service facility. It would cost a lot. You'd have to have a lot of students to cover that cost.
They seem to be doing it pretty successfully in North Bend.
Yeah, well, North Bend is a very different community. I mean, talk about people involved.
Yeah.
They all know what's going on in town.
They're, they're on top of it.
It's a small town and everybody.
Well, it's a walk the school town. You know, that's the difference here. You're not going to walk the school here.
Right.
You're not going to do that. I mean, no. And we're not, we're not, North Bendings fit nicely to do something around the school.
So back to your point about encouraging, you know, do we want to encourage older population? Do we want to encourage younger population? I'm not sure what, whatever we decided, what would that involve? And maybe we should focus on what are the things involved that would enhance those things, whichever way you go. I'm not sure what the answer is for that.
I think a lot of people in Parnell, and I say this for years, were broken up to five firehouses back in the old people, okay? And they just did not come together. They went to Williamstown, they went to North Adams, I mean, yeah, North Adams, Bennington, whatever, who's it falls. They all just kind of spread out and they never came together. And that's the nucleus of this town, the old people.
Right.
A lot of people who, if you drive on by Res Pond Road, you see a lot of people out there, just a nice neighborhood. They don't have a lot going on. And you got the trash down there.
Yep.
Down behind, you know, it's just different.
People are getting older, but they're not, not generally choosing to move away.
No, no.
So.
The theory is.
They used to make life what they want it to be. It's not bad. It's not bad.
There's a concept going on now that, you know, they want these people to move into the parents' home. They want to build an apartment. They want, they want them to give up their house and that's a house for sale.
Right, right.
And there's a lot of people in town living one person. I know a lot of women and some men, but live alone and they want them to give up and go. And they choose not to for now, but they will in time.
That's my idea for, for a senior housing facility.
Yeah.
It would make that decision easier for some people.
It would.
If they could stay in the town that they want to be in.
Yeah.
And if there was just, you know, um, structure built around this, around their facility or whatever, where they could walk to a shop or they could.
See, now you're talking, now you got it, but, but you know, that, that's not going to happen here unless, you know, what, what, what can we do to make it happen?
Yeah, yeah, well, I know, planning as we have in the past, it isn't really accomplishing.
No, it isn't.
I can't see where it's accomplishing anything, so taking a fresher look and um. Maybe setting some goals, setting goals and exploring those and.
And again, we're just putting ideas out.
Out there, yeah.
Somebody else has to pick up.
Somebody has to pick up the pieces and go do it.
Yeah.
But where, where?
Where?
We haven't even located a piece of land.
No.
Well.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking that way.
Well, that that I think, you know.
Those are nice. If you look at those those fields, I know there's there's a wetland issue there.
Yeah.
That's in, that's in, I think that's in the town sewer.
Right.
Area.
Yeah.
So that septic wouldn't be an issue.
Hmm.
Um, you have housing all back and shops close to the road. Um, people living in that housing in the back can walk to those shops, they can walk to the schools.
Hmm.
Pretty much anywhere from in that area.
Hmm.
Um, and it seems to be a problem area, you know, when you talk about the the garbage and.
Yeah.
Issues, issues there. Um, that's a way to deal with that whole, that whole area. Um.
Who owns the land?
That's, it's on the map.
I know, but you know, that's, that's the thing we need to buy.
Yeah, right.
Someone needs to buy it and put it out and have somebody to use.
We make sure that that's delineated on the plan. And on the bylaws even, you know, what what type of development could happen here? That could encourage, that could encourage somebody to part.
Well, good, yeah.
They could make, you know, make their payday a little bit better, maybe.
Hmm.
Um.
Hmm. I'm certainly not opposed to that.
It's a good place. I mean, it's a good area.
It is.
My wife and I are talking about, you know, when the time comes when, you know, driving up the road is maybe not the smartest thing for us to be doing. And, you know, going into a place, and I look in Williamstown at Highland Woods or Pride Field or whatever. They have, they have facilities with a lot of services. They have a bus stop right in front. The bus stops like every color.
Yeah.
Um, uh, they have a walkable town not far away that you can get to quickly. Um, there's so much to my mind that we need to develop before it's anywhere close to as attractive as. That Williamstown or Bennington to do that.
Yeah.
So that's not to say let's not put it on the list. I think we should, but you know, what are all the other pieces? And those are the things that.
Those are the things, you get, you get that stuff as part of the plan, then you can start.
Yeah, yeah.
Pulling all the pieces together and you can, you know.
Well, people would move in, you know, I mean, it's when you got something that some people move closer to and a business, you know.
We don't want, we don't want new housing expanding out into the countryside so much.
That's not going to enhance the rural landscape.
You guys have a lot of existing housing stock that um can be sold as is and moved right into or could be refurbished a little bit or whatever. Um.
Before it to work, a developer has to come in here.
Right.
And he has to be able to buy the land at a good price and, you know, it's probably cheaper here than Williamstown, but I don't think it's cheaper than Bennington.
No.
Um, the taxes are relatively high. And we don't have many services, so if I'm a developer, I'm probably looking at Bennington.
Hmm, yeah, yeah.
So what are the things we can do to make it more attractive to a developer?
Well, yeah, well, you know, look at Florida, Florida's a retirement community state, pretty much Florida. You know, treat, treat Paddle as a retirement focused community or uh. Um, or or just a community that focuses on people who live here, who want to live here for a long time.
Yeah.
You know, it's not, not necessarily, we're not focused on turning our, turning our homes around as fast as we can.
You know, Bennington's hot right now. I mean, Starbucks is sold, Tubolti's sold for two point million dollars, you know. I mean, somebody sees something in Bennington that I don't see.
Hmm.
And it, you know. Money, money's going in there.
Northside Drive would have been the place.
Yeah, I know, but. But it doesn't come to Paddle.
Yeah, right.
And there's no, you know, there's just uh, Paddle's a different town.
Yeah.
I mean, you got North Bennington, you, you got this, you got that, but uh, we don't have, we don't have that North Bennington sense.
We're, we're that younger, that younger um.
No.
Population.
No.
Oh, we're getting older.
Yeah.
Some of us are really. The, the population here is still jumping the car, drive fifteen minutes.
Yeah.
One way or the other, or that way or that way. And anything you really, that is available to, available to be bought off off the shelves. Or on shelves somewhere there.
Right.
Like, but um, if we're looking at maybe uh. Adjusting our community to to be be self-contained, visiting the shops that are local to have the right things, the right people.
Well, it's, it's another chicken and egg thing, you know? Um, I think a lot of people see Paddle as a veteran community. A lot of people work that way or that way or that way. So they're driven, so we don't have a similar mark on our town.
Last Monday, I went to Williamstown to talk to some businesses, okay? And one place I went to was a spoke.
Hmm.
Guy's got a good business there.
Yeah.
And I, I just said, you know, and some other people, like at the bank, whatever, but. Whatever you can't do in Williamstown, you can do in Paddle.
Yeah.
With less restrictions.
Yeah.
And I look at the dog place as being the first place that did it, you know? And I, I think there's a lot of properties here. There could be something.
Yeah.
That, you know, and uh, he listened, you know, but I, I said, you know, you got a lot of customers here, biking's big. It, Paddle's a perfect town for biking.
Hmm.
You know, I like them, but. But.
Bike shops, bike shops where.
Bike shops.
The younger people that are going to ride a bike are.
Oh, yeah.
In, in their vicinity.
Yeah.
You got a community of um, older community, community, they want to walk a little bit, short distance to something. Find some joy, whatever it is they're looking for, and then go back home, you know? But it may, it'll make your day, you know, um.
Yeah, we got some stuff, you know, like, like the Birmingham Road is, is a beautiful road, you know, it's just beautiful.
Yeah.
And I don't think there's, you know, many places around like it.
Yeah.
But uh.
That, that road needs more people walking it.
Yeah.
It's isolated.
Yeah.
It's, it's um.
It's good, but.
You got your own restaurant.
Yeah. And there's places like that in Paddle, you know, I mean, even my road, you know, there's people that just walk the road and.
I still think that I think we need to lean towards, if we want to change from this. We have to lean towards being open for businesses to come in. How are we gonna make those, let those businesses come?
Talk to them.
Because right now it's been shut down.
I know.
As far as leaving the state rules, even the state rules hurt, hurt us.
Yeah.
And we're trying to figure out how to bounce around that.
That's what we're trying to get.
Yeah, we have to have a vision when we say businesses. What are we, what are we thinking?
There's that vision towards opening us up.
Hmm.
Well, you know, it's, it's an incremental thing. I, I did studies when we were looking at the Bartels Lodge. Uh, tried to do a, a study for, you know, what it would take to turn that into a cafe, you know, little whatever. And, and we didn't have the traffic. There was just no way I could see paying the bills. So you need to start small, each little thing then can lead to the next to the next, and you know, we're not going to be able to plop it down. What's curious to me, I mean, all the stuff that B C R C did for, you know, Paddle, whatever, center, the village district up there by the school.
Yeah.
Which I think is great. Um, I don't understand why the area down there by Stewart's. You know, we've got this big empty building that's been nothing in there forever, and Williamstown is right there. They could gain so much right over the line, but why, what's, what's keeping that from getting developed?
Well, that's, that's, that was my point behind this.
They had a whole side house.
Or there's no septic down there.
Medical center is.
Oh, is that septic?
No septic down there.
Ah.
No, it ends my place.
Yeah.
It didn't go on. There was enough money to go on, Nelson didn't, he didn't want to do it, you know, I mean, not to say, but uh, yeah. It all should have been developed all the way to state line.
Yeah.
That would have been a mega.
Well, I mean, so as we think towards the future, I don't know what it would cost to do that. I'm sure it's mega bucks.
Yes, it would.
Probably don't have state grants the way we do.
No, we won't.
From your, from your store.
My store in Jelly's could have it next door.
Right.
He doesn't, but, and, and the motel has it, the, the store.
Right.
Not the water, they don't have the water.
Right.
They got their own well.
Yeah.
So I got three.
The terrain on that side is, is um ledges.
Yeah.
And hill.
Yeah.
Then it goes to the gravel bed.
Yeah.
For the sand bed.
Right.
Yeah.
Then it's um, used to be just turner beans, oh, oh, um, Odies, right?
Yeah, Odies.
Wires.
Well, wires.
Wires, and then the medical building.
Yeah, yeah, the medical building, yeah.
And so they have a septic.
No, they do now. No, they own septic.
They, they own their own septic, right? That's what I'm saying, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Nobody down there has anything.
Right.
Right.
But it must perk.
It does.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and outside from there is um.
They don't use a lot either on weekends and whatever, you know, they don't use a lot.
Dwares being building complex and that's it on the other side of the road.
Yeah.
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 And there are a couple other houses and little things there.
Yeah, one house, yeah.
But I mean, you know, I'm just trying to get into the heads of a business person looking for where to locate.
Right.
If it was cheaper in Paddle, and I don't know if it is, but if it were cheaper in Paddle than Williamstown, you know, I'd look there.
Well, Stewart's is such a goldmine. I mean, they're, they're smart people. Turned to be annoyed about that for years, and you said it's not an acre. Those dirty books there, there, for a long time.
Oh, dirty books.
Yeah.
That's right.
And it burned out, and they, you know, skip safe, safety. I said, Skip, what the hell are you saving this for? You know, anyway. And then all of a sudden, a good engineer, I asked him, I said, you're getting the same treatment that I am? And he said, yes. So they made it an acre.
Yeah.
So Stewart's moved in.
Hmm.
And thanks to Dom Barrett in Williamstown, they wanted to go to where Stop and Shop was. He said, no, I don't want you there. I can tell you have for five years. I'm looking for something better. So actually Stewart's came to Paddle and Stop and Shop went to uh, North Adams. So that was that deal.
Yeah.
And deals are being made.
Yeah, sure.
I mean, but, and not, not in Paddle, we don't, we don't have anybody here a deal maker.
Oh, yeah, I know.
No, we don't have that guy that can do things that just wave a magic wand. I'm hoping he comes to town.
Yeah.
But uh, you know.
Well.
Cause he'd do good here.
Well, we can, we can suggest this or that for, for an area. Uh, we can do what we can to make it attractive. Or just, you know, to get somebody's thought process going on.
Yeah.
Um, we can do stuff with the traffic possibly to.
Sure.
Slow it down, because right now it's like you cross the match border and just pedal to the metal.
Yeah.
If anything.
Oh, yeah.
So it doesn't have to be that way.
No, it doesn't have to be.
It actually shouldn't be that way.
I know it doesn't.
Blackways, there's a certain sections, there's.
I don't know if they're putting the bike path along there, maybe we take, you know, narrow the roadways and put a nice bike lane there, make it safer for them and slow the traffic down a little bit.
You could get shot, was like get rid of the three, three lane highways in Paddle.
I know.
You know.
Yeah.
You know, you can have a hazard caution lane where, where you've got a passing, long passing stretch.
Hmm.
Where there's businesses and there's road intersections and driveway intersections. It's crazy.
I know. Our biggest asset is the post office, trust me.
Oh, yeah.
That's the biggest asset we got.
Yeah.
And they come by, and that's why Williamstown comes over here, goes to the post office, goes to Stewart's liquor store. The car dealers, both cars, anybody in business.
There too.
Yeah, part of all business, it's all good business down there.
Yeah.
And it's Williamstown, pretty much.
Yeah.
And I, I see the cars.
Yeah, I do tire at the post office, it's a nice, pleasant experience.
It is a nice place.
They have a verge and not much traffic.
No.
You might hear a lawnmower here and there.
Well, you know, but, but you're not going to Spring Street.
Right.
Yeah.
So that's, that's a plus.
Yeah.
And it's need to be talked about. I, I've talked about it for years, you know, but anyway.
So I'm not hearing, I mean, I think we have consensus that we want to do some thoughtful development. And try to, you know, build a little more of a town center or a, a sense of community, whatever. That almost seems like a prerequisite to whether we go for old folks home or young development or something like that, maybe.
You're something different for a change.
Hmm.
You know, um, you know, this is like, this is based on the one that was before. It's all the same, it's, nothing happens.
No, nothing happens.
Again, it's encouragement, right? This doesn't have a lot of courage.
No, it doesn't, no.
Well, that goes back, I don't know if I said this to you or you, but when I first read that thing, I was thinking, you know, there's a lot of good stuff in here, but there's a lot of stuff.
Yeah.
Who reads this?
Yeah, nobody reads it.
Nobody read it.
Nobody read it.
So my thought was, let's put our suggestions in five pages. And then everything else is an addendum, all the history, all the maps, all that, that's just an addendum.
Yeah, going back sixty years.
You flip the pages and I always.
What this replaced was something that would half the thickness of it.
And the guy cut it.
Hmm.
Half of that, that much out of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, eighty-three pages.
Yeah, eighty-three pages.
But even if you didn't want to get rid of it, if you make it an addendum, you know, this is what you read, this is five pages, and we got, here's all our thoughts, you know? I have to read three pages to get to the next suggestion.
Yeah, yeah, that's it, that's long-winded and.
Diagnosis.
Not that it's about information, it's good to be in there.
Okay, we're talking about septic down there, that's a goldmine. But it's no septic, but it's still a goldmine, okay?
Yeah.
So first over the line, it's cheaper than the last place they left.
Yeah.
Massachusetts a little higher, cigarettes and whatever, beer and whatever. So they come this way, go to the post office, get a sandwich, boom.
Yeah.
That's it. So where's the map to the septic?
You got maps right here.
Yeah, I know. That's what we need to look at next.
Yeah.
We could, where we could put stuff.
Yeah, well, we, we could, so let me just, earlier, before we jump on that, I, I feel like we were talking about the. Main bullet points and, and maybe we're done, and then I'm fine to jump in there, but I just didn't know if there were other kind of.
Oh, no, I'm just saying that that's.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
But I guess even, well, my, my bullet point down to change our focus on uh. Um, population, you know, from fo- focusing on younger, attracting younger population to maintaining our older population and.
I'd be curious to get input from B C R C on that, because every place I look. They want to encourage the young, because then that has kids and there's more consumption and there's, you know, and it's passing through. I mean, eventually all these old people are going to die and who's going to replace them?
Yeah.
Um, so, you know, I, I'm not really ready to jump on that.
What's motivating them to think like that?
What's more what?
More motivates them.
To think, to think, to think you have to attract younger people.
Well, I'm just curious.
You have to make younger person wanna stay here. You've got younger people that grew up here that they leave and they stay, they stay left.
And they, they're gone.
Yeah.
Well.
Yeah.
I mean, I've.
So my, my forty-year-old kids came back from California.
Yeah.
They came back because it's beautiful.
Yeah.
Yeah. They came back because it's beautiful and they discovered, they made all kinds of connections in the communities and the Young Shires professionals.
Yeah.
All this and it's, you know, it's, it's steamrolling. So I think there's a lot of good stuff here for the younger kids.
You don't wanna, you don't wanna.
And they bring their jobs with them and they do it all at once.
Yeah, they bring their jobs with them.
Attract so much, encourage so much new development, they lose what you got.
Yeah.
Right.
And it's like, that's what, where I, I hesitate. Where, you know, what I'm thinking is find a way, because when people buy something here, generally they don't leave in a hurry. They, they get old beyond what they expect to see themselves. You know, they age to a point beyond where they thought they would ever be, you know, living here.
We have a lot of empty houses.
In your twenties, you think you're gonna, you're gonna in your thirties and you're not. All of a sudden you're in your fifties and there you are.
But we used to have a higher population than we have now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which says that we have excess housing. It's derelict.
Yeah.
A young family or a young couple before they have a family can come in, buy that and fix it up themselves and that's a good thing.
Definitely.
Um, you know, it's not like we don't have the stock and they're already connected to their water and their septic tank. I hope it works.
Yeah.
Um, you know.
Have to check it for yourself.
I've been amazed my whole life in, on the River Road.
Yeah.
Off the Main Street Bridge.
Yeah.
People buy a house there.
Yeah.
And they live there for four years, fifty years.
Yeah.
So they don't.
They don't leave.
You buy it, you don't sell it.
I know.
You're not investing, you're not, you're not buying that house as a, as a something you're gonna.
Not, not the flip.
Yes.
Not reinvesting.
Yeah.
So would it be, I don't even know how this works, but would it be something where we could address a question to B C R C to say, what is the theory of the advantage of focusing on young people?
Yeah.
Instead of old people?
Yeah.
You know.
Where did that originate and why?
Yeah, I'd like to ask.
They found.
I'm sure there are people who know a lot more than I do. I'd like to find out.
Yeah.
Because that could answer, you know, a lot of questions for me.
Yeah.
How do we do that?
Yes. I always ask you this. I know, um.
We could send questions like that up to.
When they did, they can.
Yeah.
They did a study, they won a research study, they had a report.
Yeah, or. We just jot down our questions and.
Yeah.
Get them into handout and she'll send them out to B C R C to get question, get an answer.
Yeah.
Right, I think like that.
I know B C R C themselves actually suggested a possibility of like a senior living community.
Hmm, yeah.
Open that area. And that's when it's like, I got an answer to that and it's like, it's a really good idea, I think.
Hmm.
And I don't wanna see it just brushed aside.
Oh, I know, I know.
Well, maybe, oh, we've got somebody on here. Um. So maybe we just ask Hannah to send a note and see what they say back, you know? What is the theory behind this? What, what are the advantages and disadvantages of each?
Well, yeah.
Let's learn something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Are there other main kind of overarching goals that we're talking about?
I have always, I know, I know it got put into this in, in old marks. Better community.
Is that, is that what we're trying to be or what we are?
No, that, that's what we're gonna be.
That's where we're, we're headed.
We're headed.
We don't change things. And some people might really like that idea.
They do.
And, but I don't wanna see, I don't want, I don't want that phrase in our, in our product.
Hmm.
Because that's not our goal.
Yeah.
It shouldn't be. Um, it's not to say, not to say that those that like feeling like that.
Well, people are gonna work where they're gonna work.
People come here, they buy a place, they own it.
But these days, there is a lot of, you know, smallest, beautiful, local, you know, energy. And so, you know, the Hillside House spot that they opened up is really popular. You know, the new owners of the Apple Barn, I know that's in Bennington, but you know, there's, there's, there's a lot of energy to support that. Guy opened up a bagel shop in North Bennington. People are paying two fifty for a bagel. I can't understand it. They're going in there and buying bagels like crazy.
I know, I know.
I remember outside of, outside of Bennington in Pownell, over to New York, um, across Lloyd Creek or Husek. There's, there's businesses.
There's a group of Pownell ones of goddamn stuff over there. She has.
The people that, those structures of something, you know? It's like, why can't that, why can't someone?
We don't have a downtown, you know, Husek has a downtown. Husek also has a downtown. I don't know why Creed heard much.
You've got three villages. Really, what do you, where, where would you put a downtown and what would it?
Well, I mean, the whole B C R C study is about the places up there and, or down there, where, I don't know where I'm sitting. Yeah, right here.
Well, downtown would be right through Route Seventy.
Yeah.
This is.
Be best.
Yeah, it's downtown.
We, we could say, we're gonna, this is gonna be our downtown. We're gonna have all kinds of different building types here. The people that own it might have something to say about it too.
And yeah, if, you know.
I mean, there's a lot of housing in a downtown. That's, that's.
But they used to be shops. A lot of them used to be shops. And I don't know what, you know, I know that place at the end, they, the Chameys owned, there used to be a clothing store or something and the next one was kind, what, an auto dealership or something?
Yeah. But, but you had the racetrack thing, that when you had restaurants and stuff, you had traffic.
Right.
You had people coming and going, you know, and people went around here and looked for a place to live and, you know, they liked Pownell. And then went away. And now we're trying to pick up the pieces. And that's what we're trying to do.
They talk about a compact community. It's like, um, business on the brown floor.
Yeah.
Apartments on.
Right.
It's like, it's not, it's not Pownell's character for one thing.
Yeah, I don't think that's character.
Where, where would you put something like that?
Yeah, it's, it's tough because of that situation. Where, where do you put businesses? We have open areas, but there's a lot that isn't. It's like we were given, trying to give the permit, well, we gave the permit to the, it was a house that they wanted to convert, you know, so. Never got done. That was probably, this never got done. Um, having a restaurant there, I think would have been great, a little small restaurant.
Oh, God, it'd be wonderful.
Well, the guy had that complaint though, when you kind of slowed it down.
Right.
Cause the water's gonna run down his yard or whatever, you know, whatever. And that kind of put this, kind of put the screws to it a little bit. Just slowed it down.
What's going on?
Somebody always does it.
Right.
Yeah.
And I, that's, that's the issue.
That's the issue.
So we're trying.
Somebody's always gonna complain.
And trying to, trying to bounce around that. How do we get businesses to come in, but, and get them in between housing developments?
Yeah.
So if we go all housing development, we're never gonna have businesses come in because you're not gonna be able to put in between them. So we have to try to write something out that says we're encouraging businesses and businesses could potentially buy these housing areas to put businesses.
What you talked about last meeting, extending the village districts, I think makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Because there is some money available and you've got, you know, the American Legion there and they got that nice big chunk of land behind there.
Oh, my God, I had a beautiful piece of land.
Oh, yeah.
They used to refer to that, you know, the Doug, cause there used to be the Cherry Court, that property.
Next to me.
Call it the Fork property.
Yeah.
That, that could, that could be developed.
Could be, but it's expensive, yeah.
Yeah.
Very expensive.
He's got, he's got the storage units and then all, then there's the Legion and the Division. But there's like a metal, and there's, you know, the, the old cabins that he was working on at one point.
Yeah, yeah.
He's got a big old, big.
He's got a nice little.
Yeah. And I don't know what that shop was on three forty-six, but he was starting to renovate that.
Oh, yeah, I just thought it, but he ran out of dough.
It was a nice.
He doesn't have water. See, he came before the water board and was there on.
But he doesn't have water.
Yeah, no. And, and it's tough. It's across the street. But hit it across, there's a lot of old pipes in there that show up on the meter, but it could be worked out. But I don't think he's got the money to do it, to be honest with you.
Again, he doesn't have to do it. If somebody, I mean, that's a great place to have a little coffee shop or something like that.
The old pipes are from the old fellow, right?
From the old water, Murray Lewis system, from the Murray Lewis system. Remember Murray Lewis's? Yeah, that was a great water system. Ooh, yeah.
We were asking before, is it true that you could send a question off to B C R C to just help us understand? Yeah, okay, we got, we got a question to send up there. So, great.
Thank you.
So any other major points? Or, I mean, maybe, maybe we'll add to this as we're going through the.
Yeah.
Stop the.
I forgot about Murray Lewis's water. Yeah, he had, you know, had water pipes in there. They got them up all the time. But they're both.
Hmm. See, I think adding what we're gonna wind up doing is putting, we have to put it into a, a format of saying, these are all the locations that potentially could hold a business or expand to those businesses.
Yeah.
And we have to label out all of our town areas, our realogy areas.
Mm hmm.
That we don't live, you know, don't have a place to put it, then putting out businesses is not gonna work. So we have to.
We already have it, but we could expand it, you know?
And we're gonna say that this is potential for those areas, because you might have a house there right now. But if somebody with the right business comes along and said, I need that land too, they're gonna have to, they're gonna buy out that house or attempt to.
Sure.
Well, yeah, hopefully that'll be worth their while to do it.
Right.
That would be, yes.
And that, and that's what we have to look at, not just say, well, it's a house now.
Yeah.
Cause.
Oh, yeah.
Cause, and I see it this, and I'm gonna say it this way because I've seen this happen a lot. Um. It, you, what you wind into is we had so much farm area here, lots of farm area. But over the years, I've been growing up and you guys probably know the same thing, see it, but farm land has been disappearing. Why? Because somebody came by with the right amount of money to buy up that field. And now they stick a house in the middle of the field and there it is.
Yeah.
So if I think of it as an opposite, I think some of that housing could be bought, especially when we have now villages. We could buy that or, or leave that available, that land available to for somebody to buy up, even if there's a house there. Instead of saying, which a lot of this I took it as that ha, if there's a house there already, you can't put something there. As a way it was trying to be written off.
The ten acres.
I think, I think we need to encourage that something could go in there.
Yeah, ten acres across in Berdins. That field is a nice field for development.
Mm hmm.
She owns it, but I mean, just like.
It's not up to us to sell it or buy it. Sell it. We're just saying this land should be available.
You mentioned the place three forty-six that could be fixed up, you know, if somebody bought it. And I don't know what he's selling, you know?
Well, he might even lease it, you know?
And whatever, but I mean, you could talk to him, I could talk to him.
Well, we have to find somebody who wants to operate it.
No, 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 but then would he sell it? That's the question.
Yeah.
And, yeah, maybe I would, you know, he's not gonna do anything with it. I know he isn't, you know, he's getting.
Here's one thing, you know. I, I kind of like, would like to see something happen with a lot of the sites in this town other than solar, solar development.
Oh, yeah.
And somehow solar developers are able to talk to landowners and get what they want.
Hmm.
Um. Away for us, I mean, the only way to, around that would be for us to be able to convince the owner to reconsider selling their land to somebody else for something else.
Yeah, well, you can also sell the development rights.
Yeah.
You know, if you own, if you own a hundred acres and you sell the development rights, your tax bill goes down, but it can't be developed. You know, it's open land.
Yeah.
The Burridge lands is beautiful land up there. It's, you know, it's messy, but it could be cleaned up. It's got a beautiful view. Uh, Burridge owns a lot of land, but they don't own, you know, I mean, I, there's issues there, but a lot of the land's not for sale.
Yeah.
For reasons.
We're looking ten years, you know, down.
Yeah, down.
So we might as well, you know, just assume all possibilities.
Yeah.
We don't know what's gonna develop.
Adopted twenty nineteen. How often do we have to do it? Six years?
Every eight years.
It was five years back then.
It was? Okay. I, I think I was told, I had assumed it was ten because, you know.
I was on six to eight, but.
I worked on that.
That's what I was.
Move behind.
Yeah, yeah, five years.
Five years. So we're, we're past, we're past the time when we.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Yes, past the development.
Yeah.
Thing that happened in Bennington just a week or so ago.
Oh, I heard about that.
They go, because their town wasn't, town plan wasn't up to date. So.
Yeah.
Um, we don't have as much time on it to work on this as we thought when it first started.
No.
So we definitely need to make some progress on it.
I think he's on the right track. Five, six pages is enough.
Yeah.
To keep people interested.
Yeah.
We can flip the pages. It's all the garbage is in there and it's there for anybody to read if they want to.
All, all this, all the stuff.
Yeah.
All the data.
Yeah.
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 All the maps.
All the maps.
All independent.
Yeah.
Um, they're, they're.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
No.
That's great.
I think there's stuff where it was mentioned, is it mentioned in here or in the bio loss?
That's a separate one.
Yeah, but I gotta do that too.
Ideal, like development sites for, for, for wind, solar.
All, all that's in there.
Utilities, that's a lot of the bio loss or is in here.
Yeah, it's in there.
Above. It doesn't seem we like what it says.
No, I, I work them.
We have, we have to keep that stuff.
Yeah.
We have to maybe dust it up a little bit.
Yeah.
Better make sure what happened in Bennington don't happen to us.
Right.
Yeah.
So a lot of this other.
We got one sitting by the track that nobody got.
Oh, my.
So that's.
What happened?
The one by the track was, it was originally supposed to benefit town and.
Yeah. We had no say in it.
Yeah, we got awesome, it will, so it's.
Whatever's gonna happen, I think he's gonna go bankrupt because the states forced him to, uh, give him a twenty thousand fine and went to court.
Yeah.
And they judge him two hundred dollars a day for not, for not putting up a fence though.
Mm hmm.
And it's gotta be away from the building with quite a bit because they're talking about falling panes of glass And it's gotta be away from the building with quite a bit, cause they're talking about falling panes of grass in the building. So it's gotta be fifty feet or more. So that doesn't solve anything, doesn't tear the building down. But the state, unless they, they won't allow an engineer to go in there, and they haven't allowed anybody to go in there, and they haven't put up a fence. So.
How is that a solution to that?
It isn't a solution, but it's two hundred, twenty dollar fine. So he's just gonna go bankrupt, you know, he's gonna get out of here.
Yeah. Where the state.
But then we have a. A big white elephant.
At some point, the state has to make it a little bit easier for somebody to do something about that. Otherwise it will never.
I know. And what's valuable is the goddamn solar panels. Thirty cents a kilowatt for a seed.
For who?
Some people in Portugal.
Portugal. That, that works.
So, so, you know, the kid down in.
That's the wrong piece.
Yeah.
It's like panel in there.
They worked that out.
Oh, they worked it good. Right down in the snowmills, down in Kelly's.
I mean, it didn't, all this stuff going in helps panel in a way.
No way. We didn't have anything to say about it. We didn't have a word of it. We had so many things, the school, that just teased me off. And this other thing sort of teased me off. But this is panel, you know, and, and it just, we gotta stop this. We gotta, and I think Mike's on the right track, you know, he's gonna, you know. We got some good boards here.
Yeah.
And, uh, they carry, and they, they show up all the time, you know, and, uh, I've been on some good boards here, but this is a good one. And, uh, we care, but we can't see the salt and not, that we need to break open. You know, somebody needs to come in here and some dough and do something.
There are some people in town with.
There are some people in town. I know, okay?
I know.
I know, I know.
I knew it was there. I was like.
Well, you know, they're, they're not here. They're here, but they're not here, not yet.
Well, you know, I mean, I've met them now.
Yeah.
Now I got another conversation.
Conversation with them too.
Yeah.
You know, this guy and that guy up there, but, you know, they're busy. They're busy people right now.
Busy. Um, well, yeah, it's interesting, but you're right. There's some, there's.
There's some good money here, there's some damn good money here. And, uh, you know, if they see something they like, they'll do it.
Yeah.
And I, you know.
And that's great. And, and.
It's gonna happen.
What, what my son Nate found out is he can get grants if you can come up with ten or twenty percent matching. And he can raise ten or twenty percent from people in town to do this grant so they can, you know, develop the trails in the forest or something.
Yeah.
It's happening. We don't have to use any town money at all.
There's, there's money here for that like crazy. And, you know.
Well, there's.
I've been involved in so many money things, and I, I tell you how, you know, it just pours in. If you got the right cause and you're doing right and you're honest, you'll get the money.
Yeah.
We've done it.
People that are starting to make it happen, which is exciting.
Well, let's move on.
So. Oh, yeah.
Well, at one point here, it's referred to as rural or rurian town.
Right.
Are we using words like that?
No, we're not, no.
How, how are we identifying the town? If we were gonna like, put out, put out a document or a statement about what this town is.
I wouldn't say agrarian, we shouldn't be rural.
A rural what?
I, 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 you know, it's a mixed use town, you know, it's mixed. And it is so old and decrepit in some ways, and yet some modern in other ways down, down where I work.
There's a lot of enterprises in this town, um, you know, small businesses, um.
Yeah, there's people in town don't want nothing there though.
Yeah.
They don't want anything. They wanna leave it to the, just the way it is.
No change.
No change.
They don't want something in the backyard.
I know.
I don't like that myself.
I, well, I could be too, you know?
We are, we are, but we.
But, but you gotta show some, you gotta show some progress.
Yeah, we gotta, yeah, we gotta have some.
Common sense.
Gotta have some.
And that's not the right, you know, we'll get one of these people, I guarantee you, I don't know about the new, the basketball coach, he might be the guy to do it, you know?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I forgot about him.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He's coming to town. Anyway, that's. Oh, the San Antonio Spurs, seven hundred and fifty thousand, he bought that land across the road back to Harshes, that field. He bought it a number of years ago. He owns his, you know, he's a coach from the San Antonio Spurs, he's Popovich.
Popovich, yeah. Towards Williams, big deal.
He's got friends in Williamstown. And that, and that, you know, Harshes is here.
Yeah.
And that's above the people in the. He owns that. And, uh, he's give up being this coach. His, his wife died a couple of years ago, so I don't know, you know? He's got some friends in Williamstown. Mason used to plow, I mean, hay it all the time and plow, you know, anyway. But, uh, I hear he's coming to town. So, anyway. We'll meet him.
Yeah.
But, you know, it, it's, uh, and I'm old, but I'm not that old. You know, uh.
You're still firing.
Well, I care about this town. I, I really do. And, uh, you know, I, I, I see so many negative people. They don't wanna do nothing. People I meet, you know, and there's, ah, how do you wanna do that? We're happy the way we are. And they all got money. I mean, they retired and they live here and they got, you know, they worked at Steiner. Hey, I know a kid that's got a million dollars in four O one Ks. There's a lot of four O one K money out there too. And, uh, what are you gonna do with that? He said, I don't know, I'm gonna die. He says, I'll give it to my brother or whatever. But that money's there.
It's been a lot for myself. I'd rather stay exactly the way we are than to see something radically different that doesn't seem to fit the community.
Well, that, that's, that's your side, you know?
That's where I would.
Yeah.
I would be up in arms or whatever. It's like, um, have a good idea. It's like.
You think, you think the solar panels up on Palmer's was great?
I'm not a fan of that, no.
I know, but it's, but it's up there, right?
Yeah, well, that's, it's, it's, it's no fault to the landowner at all.
No, 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 no. It's a perfect place to put it. It was a burned down gravel bed. Hey, you gotta gravel bed down here. The lady's got more money than God. Like four hundred thousand for it. And just to shut it, close it down. They want eight hundred thousand for it. And, uh, still got ten years in there, I know.
Then again, you have, you have a developer that's got a lot of money.
I know.
It's, it's attractive and it's a way to pay the bills and pay the taxes.
That's, that's what keeps it going. Money, money, money talks and you know what happens. Anyway.
It's not getting cheaper.
No. There's money in this town, a lot of money in this town.
Staying, staying still is actually, at least in business, if you're not growing, you're dying.
You're dead.
Yeah. You know?
Stagnation is a nasty word.
Right. And so, you know, change is gonna happen and it's a matter of making it a change that you like versus, you know, change you don't like.
So we got people that like things and people who don't like things. Where do we go next? That's, uh, you know.
So.
It's ten after seven, guys.
Yeah, ten after seven. I don't know if there was somebody there, but, um, what are we gonna try and do for the next meeting? If we've got sort of our, at least the founding bullet parts.
The map for solar path, uh, the sewer map.
Yeah, we got these, these maps.
So, if that, that was feeding the idea of extending the village district, and I was wrong. At the last meeting, I thought we could just tell B C R C to change the map and it would happen, which they said. But we don't get to make that decision, right?
They don't get to. She, but she gets to make it.
Uh, you think we could tell her to do it and it would happen?
No, she would go to the state and ask the state. The state has.
Doesn't have to go through the select board though?
It does, but it does. The, the state runs the whole goddamn thing. They run. And they tell her what to do and what you can do.
So that's, so we can do that?
Oh, we can do that, yeah. We, we still gotta represent.
This is all very confusing to me.
It requires like board approval also, but the state, the state is, they want their hands on it. There's a lot of hoops that Darcy would have to jump through.
Right.
In order to do any expansion.
Uh, but if we handed them our thoughts and they would work on it and they would get the select board's approval and, and we could just go yay?
She's tough. I've talked with her quite a bit. She's tough.
Well, if we're, if we're out changing the outline a little bit, we have a good rationale. We could present it, ask them to do it. Um, when they gave their presentation, they said something about us, well, it's no, we'll.
Yeah.
There, there's room for that.
Well, then, if we can map that out at the next meeting, that'd be great.
It would be that you would kind of have a sort of commission meeting with R C and the select board, and then they go through the state, but we can't do anything without the state hoops.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Well, that makes sense.
State money.
Well, we're just drawing lines.
I know.
It gives us access to.
We're just showing our vision.
Yeah. It wasn't put there for.
I think, I think a lot of it will depend on our, our rationale for wanting to do it.
Yeah.
We say we want hook up, man, then have a good rationale for it. Make it, make an argument for it, uh.
But they gotta pay to hook up now.
Yeah, I know.
I know. And a lot of the land is not, uh, is passed by.
Yeah, a lot of places, a lot of places that, that got cut off before it got to.
Right.
Where it was intentional, probably was.
No, probably was. Enough was enough, you know? They picked up all the, your red spots.
Well, there was.
Going to the river.
I think there was a faction that did not want a manufacturing facility.
No, 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 they did not.
Their.
No development at all.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's, that was.
That's why that happened.
Yeah, that's why it happened.
So we need to make, if it, if it's something that needs to be remedied, then we, we need to try to remedy that.
If we can, yeah.
We have these maps here. Uh, this is the only one we have. Hannah can make, if we wanna start marking up maps, she said she would, she would make us another.
Make some copies. Do we have the village district here too?
Yeah, we have, we have all three here.
Okay. Okay, great.
Down by two different people.
Yeah. Cause I think we're gonna wanna take some color markers and all certain things so we can see what we're doing here.
Yeah.
That'd be great if we can. See, now that map only shows where the sewer line is now, and it doesn't show me what's right next to that.
Right.
Or something like that. And, and I don't have, or what's out there.
Yeah.
We have, we have been, so, to do this last.
Right, they're so, yeah, they're so, uh, hard to read.
Yes.
Yeah.
But we can, you know, if we get something that we can mark up, then we can maybe.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that'll probably take the meeting.
Anybody out there?
Jim is on and he does have a question.
Oh, Jim, yeah.
Okay, so, um, we discussed that issue enough.
Yeah.
Um, and we talked about what we're doing in town that, but I think we, we don't have any time to do any of that.
Right.
Next meeting, agenda items, maps, the maps, mark them up.
Hmm, yeah.
Maps and kind of touch up on this.
There was a Word document for, for this plan.
It just emailed into you all a little while ago.
Oh, there is, okay, okay.
You're looking for a Word document, not like the Adobe's that you can edit.
Right, so we can edit it.
Yeah.
I don't have one. I was at Kegel and I didn't realize we were looking for a Word document. That was my fault, um.
You can export.
There's nothing easily accessible that I've seen, but I'll do some digging, see what I can find.
Yeah.
If you have Adobe, you can usually accept.
Yeah, we can convert it.
Convert it.
But Tara and I have a lot of trouble with converting documents like that, because that one I think is a scanned version, so it really messes up the format, so I'll try to see what I can do.
Well, we can.
This would be converted on the format. Before this will turn into a PDF, it was done probably, I think in Word by B C R C. So. Mike, Mike Thatcher from B C R C.
Who's the, that's true. Maybe B C R C has it.
All right.
And I'll send you the question.
Yeah. He's, uh.
So, that brings us up to public on it. And we have one.
Not really public. Did we, uh, have a, a appointment scheduled with Darcy to have a meeting?
We were talking about going down to the Septic system at one point, yeah.
Yeah, I emailed her about that and she didn't respond, I think.
Yeah.
I, I think we need to send her another one to see if we can't get down there, because if we need to put the expansion of the sewer plant into the plan, the town plan, then we should know a little bit more information of what she needs.
Right.
I'll follow up on that email. I'll just CC right so that she, maybe she'll.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
Yeah. Yeah, we should, we should, just so we know what we're talking about too, when we say, you know.
Yeah.
Maybe we could set that for following meeting to, at that point. So we got, our next meeting will be going after this, maybe the following meeting if, if she can get contact to a.
If a different time of day is easier for her, I mean, you know.
Cause it's safe, it's safe that we could do whatever people are available, or our, our board, our board members.
No, I, I have quite, you know, questions about in general the operation. Um, James has questions that, you know, he, he's got some expertise, he knows the questions to ask.
Yeah.
Yeah. I would refer James as far as a lot of that.
Yeah, cause we gotta go on the, uh, expansion of the system as well. If we're, if we're gonna bring in businesses and stuff like that, we need to know where she's at for her capacity.
Right. I, yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely. All right.
Anybody else out there?
Nope, that was it.
That was so good.
Thanks, James.
Thanks, James.
Oh, so did we have a quorum for the minutes?
Um, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, Jim.
Yeah.
Yeah.